Do we have? Yes. Busy week in Urbana.
What?
Been a busy week in Urbana.
Welcome to Ring Central Conferencing.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, October 14th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Percy?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin? Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
There are no minutes to approve this week. Additions to the agenda, I would like to add the annual update from Experience CU. This was inadvertently left off the agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second you.
Moved by Jay, seconded by Mary Alice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great, thank you. We'll begin with that, then. Like to introduce Jane Deluse. She's Director of Experience CU, which is our visitor tourism bureau in Champaign County. We have a longstanding partnership with Experience CU and have worked very productively together for many years. One of the most recent and largest components of our partnership has been our contribution to the African American Heritage Trail, which has just taken off. And it was actually very obvious when we were lobbying in Washington DC this spring, the interest at the federal level among certain agencies for the African American Heritage Trail was really heartwarming to see. So I'll turn this over to Jane.
Thank you, Mayor Marlin. Appreciate the opportunity to spend a few minutes with all of you this evening. As the mayor mentioned, Experience Champagne Urbana is known as the tourism agency for the area. We like to think of ourselves as a destination champions in promoting a welcoming destination for residents and visitors alike. So we recently completed a Destination 2027 strategic plan. And our core values, we believe in brilliance, we bring joy and innovative mindset to all our work. Spark, we are tenacious and spirited in our pursuit of impact. And illumination, we shine an optimistic light on all facets of our community. So we'll start with the numbers. In addition to Champaign County, our region actually includes five counties. So we oversee Champaign, Douglas Ford, Moultrie, and Payette Counties. And the tourism industry from the state of Illinois, these numbers supported 5,033 jobs in our area, which is an increase of over 2%, generating $172.7 million in payroll. And the two most important number, well, all of them are important numbers, but bringing $19.3 million in local taxes to be invested back to the community, which is 11.5% increase from the previous year. And this is through $666.9 million in visitor spending, which is also a 9.5% increase. Our region achieved the eighth highest spending in Illinois. So we are outperforming our comparable communities around the area and some larger ones as well. So oftentimes, people think of us as the people who bring in the sports events. And yes, we do bring in a lot of sport events. I bring these up tonight because the cost of bringing in the tournaments continues to increase. But we're very happy with what they do for our community. If you look at a sport like US Quad Ball, which a lot of people know as Quidditch, that's been rebranded as Quad Ball for trademark purposes with J.K. Rowling and Harry Potter, but now known as Quad Ball. That event, we paid $12,000 to bring in as a bid incentive, and an estimated economic impact that is back in our community of $324,000 for a one-weekend event. Even more, the middle school basketball championships is a bid incentive of $8,000 and an estimated impact of 2.1 million. And I want to go back to Quad Ball for just a second. That particular event brings in a variety, a very diverse population in competing. And they're very competitive. If you ever have watched it play, and yes, they do carry broomsticks. They don't fly like in the Harry Potter movies, but it is quite an event that brings in your non-traditional athlete that you see in a lot of other sports. Back to the middle school basketball championships. That happens the weekend after the high school basketball. So during a time when the university is on spring break, this is a countywide sellout. This is a huge event, and they continue to grow and utilize not only gyms in recreation centers, but gyms in high schools, gyms on campus where they can. And that's a huge event with the $2.1 million impact. D1 Nation Football, again, another sport. We are kind of being known as a football school right now with the Illini team doing well. And so having youth football, very important bid incentive, paid 7,500, estimated impact of 1.6 million. And similar, another rank-up football bid incentive, 7,500, impact 632,000. All of these events require investments to bring them in. All of these events utilize Urbana Hotels. They frequent their restaurants. They go to fill up their cars with gas, retail, and utilize the entire county area. Speaking of sports, we did just sign a five-year renewal to continue hosting the IHSA State Boys Basketball Tournament. It has gone over very well. We're appreciative of the city of Urbana being a part of us having that event here. It's been a very big success for our area. What I like about it in addition is the fact that at the same time, we are hosting the IHSA State Wheelchair Basketball Championships and the Illinois Special Olympics Unified Basketball Tournament. This is all part of our initiatives to be very welcoming to everyone who is coming to compete in the Champaign-Urbana area. And again, both IHSA State Basketball and the IHSA State Wrestling, which happens in February, each utilized Urbana Hotels as well. So meetings and conferences definitely don't have the media appeal most of the time that the sports events do, but so, so important because of the fact that they happen during the weekdays. So we are in the process right now of working. We just have a trade show that we went to called Small Market Meetings, and that is bringing in conferences that could range from 50 people, but could also range up to 500 people. We've also went to another trade show that we are looking at events that would happen on the University of Illinois campus during the summer when those facilities are available. And one of them is close to 5,000 people. Think about 5,000 participants in the summer utilizing University of Illinois campus facilities and what that does for our small businesses at a time when the university doesn't have as many people on campus. These events are huge for the area, and we're working very hard because we're a little behind the eight ball for some other universities. And it's taken a little bit for our university to coordinate efforts so that we are working with one department, the university conferences and services, conferences and then services, to be able to recruit these large conferences that can utilize those facilities. All of the conferences here, whether it's events that we bring in, whether it's events that we provide, again, transportation by way of bid incentive, concierge service that we're there at those conferences for registration, or welcome bags, whatever it is that they need for their conference to be successful. So when we put together our strategic plan, we focus on four objectives. To enhance our destination, so this would be all of our destination development projects. To foster and expand our partnerships, such as with you, the city of Urbana. To amplify what we say our stories, but it's really amplifying the community stories. It's the entire area and telling those stories to residents, to visitors, and potential residents. And to strengthen our organization and team to meet very much changing needs. So if you recall, we changed our name from Visit Champaign County to Experience Champagne Urbana. Yes, Urbana is in the name. And this was part of our launching the brand, which I talked about when I came here before because we did it in May of '23. But the key with this is, and a big reason of why we did it, is how people find us, how they find this area. So click-through rates have increased by 100%. Restaurant Week website traffic increased by almost 14%. Response to radio advertising through WGN doubled. Website traffic increased by 28%. Action on our web page has increased by almost 40%. And hotel tax collected increased by 12% year over year of having our new brand. So I think it's important that we not only tell our story about the region, we use the right search so that people know how to find us. Another area, and oftentimes when I hear, "What do you do for us? What are we doing for the city of Urbana?" I can't emphasize enough the importance of our digital outreach. We do many business and event features through social media channels. Blog posts that highlight local businesses, events, and individuals that are making an impact. The Spring Local Flavors blog featuring Riggs, Timponi, Silver Creek, and Market at the Square was used in digital campaigns and saw over 4,200 unique views. And I think when you look at how we are able to help small businesses, many of them don't have that capacity to be able to do that marketing. So we're helping them find a broader audience, not just for residents in the area, but for visitors that are coming to our area. Speaking of food and restaurants, we did have the Restaurant Week. 2024 participation saw 49 participating restaurants with 11 new participants. We had 79,516 website visits and 29,235 unique users for people wanting to know more about Restaurant Week. We find that it is a great time because it is the end of January. And I know I've said this before, but people are done with their New Year's resolutions by the end of January. So it's a great way for area restaurants to try a new menu item, to try to entice people to maybe come to the restaurant that they haven't been to before. So we have heard time and time again testimonials from our restaurants that are so appreciative of that extra traffic during what can be a slower time of year. And the Experience passes. So these are a way for people to take a passport, if you will, but it's all done through an app. And we have two of them. We have the CU and Art Trail, which features over 200 public art pieces in the Champaign-Urbana area. That can be murals, that can be public art sculptures. So all of those, all of those ideas in ways that we are able to experience through public art pieces has been very effective. And with that, if people visit and check in at over 50 of those spots, they can come in and pick up a free Chambana Proud t-shirt at our office. And it's all free for people. All they have to do is download it and then check in when they go to a different sculpture, a different mural. We have seen a number of people that have come in our office and said, "I never knew that we had this much public art in our area." The same that we have 70?
Jane, excuse me a minute. Is there a motion to extend for a couple of minutes?
Sorry.
I'm moved to extend the time of five minutes so that she can finish.
Yep.
Five minutes work, okay?
Oh, okay. I'll talk fast. I didn't know I was on a timeline. Now, thank you. 70 Asian restaurants, and as we said, earn prizes for participating. Accessible CU, again, a very important initiative collaborating with community choices to feature local businesses with accommodations for both physical and cognitive disabilities. These are not restaurants and businesses that are self-reporting. These are done by community members with the disabilities. And very important for people to be able to promote those. And we have over 80 businesses that have been featured to date. Grant assistance. Flessers Candy Kitchen, $40,000 through a backing historic small restaurants grant. CU Time and Adventures, $318,000. This grant happened because we helped them make it happen. This isn't just free money. They worked very hard for that grant. But it was because of our assistance that they're going to be able to do the addition to their amazing facility that they already have. And then another one that's coming that we can't talk about yet because it hasn't been announced, but for $450,000. Recognizing our Illinois makers, Cloud Mountain Kombucha and also Fire Doll Studio. Both ways that we take their small business, brick and mortar, and be able to have them be part of the State Illinois Office of Tourism campaign that heightens them at a larger level. And data research. So we are doing much more of this with connecting with all of you, with our economic development teams, local businesses, attractions to share this impactful visitor data. Top visited regions coming to the area, University of Illinois, 36%. Urbana, 13%. Markets of where people are coming from, Chicago, St. Louis, Peoria, Springfield, Decatur. St. Louis was a surprise to us, and we've actually redirected some of our marketing efforts toward that area because of this visitor behavior that we're able to actually see the data. This data is collected by credit card receipts, cellphone data, and ticket sales. Visitor spending, 13% of that is in Urbana. Average of $142 per visitor per stay. And the top sectors for spending are food and beverage, followed by gas and service stations. But the key number in all of this is 74% of our visitors are staying overnight. That's important for our whole area, with 17% of them staying in Urbana. Mayor Marlin mentioned the African American Heritage Trail. We are wrapping up the Phase One, which is finalizing Skeleton Park. It is a tribute to African American musicians through the decades. That art installation will be installed at the end of December and features 95 artists that are going to be recognized on that. We've installed 22 of our 23 interpretive signs. We've introduced four of our five murals, and we're creating visitors. Couple pictures of sign unveilings as well as a mural. And I need to just tell you, these muralists engaged in our community. When Rob was at the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, he didn't just paint a mural. He engaged with those young people inside the center. He spent time with them. He talked about the art. He talked about what he does with this. And it was just phenomenal to see him engaging. And you can see that on the left picture there. The right in the middle is one of the two murals that he did. And the third is when we did the meet and greet at Gallery Art Bar. Also, all four muralists acquired supplies from Art Coop. What a way to utilize. Instead of having their supplies shipped here, they utilized a local business right here in Urbana. Film Office, we continue to want to be in film community. We've got, did a tour with nine location scouts. We've done workshop series. We've hosted premieres of movies, and we've developed marketing materials and giveaways to promote our location. We are a strong film community, and with continued support, that will even continue to grow. Our Chambana Welcome Crew, which is all of our ambassadors. We have 69 ambassadors that engage with new residents or potential residents. We serve 202 new and potential residents through this program. Young professionals are the top age group and highly interested in arts and culture and outdoor opportunities. These are all on our website, too. You can read about each of the ambassadors. They get matched up with a new resident or potential resident to talk about the great way to live here. With programming, which we do in conjunction with the Champaign County Economic Development Corporation, we've developed the community job application. New to CU mixers in December will be at the Gallery Art Bar. Doing community tours for either high faculty, new faculty staff. We also did ones this last week for wheelchair basketball recruit parents. And we also continue our Chambana Proud podcast, which I hope you will all listen in because I continue to find out more things about our community through that podcast. We've been building our team. I've had to restructure it to do what we can. And here's our team and our board and our foundation trustees. So this is everybody who I work with that serves you. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Do you have time for a couple of questions? If anyone has questions for Jane? James?
Thank you, Jane. For the Restaurant Week, how many of those restaurants were in Urbana?
I don't off the top of my head. I'll have to follow up. I don't have the listing on that.
Right, thanks.
Yeah. And everybody who wants to be, we don't do chain restaurants, but any local restaurant that wants to be a part of it and can be a part of it, meaning they're able to serve during that time, we welcome them for sure. So, but I'll follow up with you on what that was.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to public input. If anyone wishes to address the council, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Greetings. I'm Amy Scoville. I just have a, on a suggestion card presentation, please, for you to consider regarding fair housing laws.
Greetings, Mayor, Council. My name is Leslie Crowsey. I'm a lifelong resident of Champaign. With last week being Mental Illness Awareness Week, I wanted to speak up and raise awareness and share my experience of abuse at Preston's Covenant Medical Center in Urbana, Illinois. Exactly 10 years ago, on October 9th, 2014, I was released from a psychiatric hold after a crisis worker from Community Elements, the Champaign County Mental Health Center told me, quote unquote, "I wasted everyone's time coming there." Ignore the fact that I was brought in by the Illinois State Police for attempted suicide. However, my release had not been communicated properly to hospital security. So once I reached the double-door exits of the ER, two security guards violently subdued me. I was restrained in a chokehold to prevent me from breathing. I was dragged along the hallways of the ER. I was thrown onto a bed, and I was strapped down. At no point did these security guards attempt to de-escalate the situation. In fact, their first interaction was not to say anything to me, but rather to resort to extreme physical violence in a hospital right at the entrance of the emergency department with staff all standing around, just gawking. Nobody attempted to intervene to stop this brutal attack. Not even the crisis worker from the Champaign County Mental Health Center, who just stood nearby with a grin on his face, watching me suffer. It was the most traumatic experience of my entire life, even more terrifying than when I nearly drowned at Sholompool when I was eight years old. I seriously thought this was the end. I thought I was going to die in a hospital, not by suicide, but instead by the very people who are supposed to protect me from harm. The worst part of all, the two perpetrators of this heinous and deplorable act faced no criminal charges because Urbana City Police refused to press charges. In fact, the officer in question told me that because I'm, quote unquote, mentally ill, the hospital staff had the right to, quote unquote, restrain me. He also denied I was placed into a chokehold at all. Then he yelled at me to get out of the interview room because he didn't want to hear any more of my story. Case closed. In his mind, I was not a victim of wrongdoing. I was just a waste of time. Urbana City Police had better things to do than to arrest two violent offenders for committing an act of aggravated battery in a hospital. That's not in the purview of Urbana City Police. Beneath their pay grade to protect a vulnerable member of society from gross negligence and misconduct, but it doesn't end there. One week later, I visited the hospital's risk management department. Their patient relations director informed me that after speaking to both security guards, there was no evidence of wrongdoing. Furthermore, she denied I was even placed into a chokehold. She openly admitted, though, to never actually reviewing the security footage because she just completely trusted the words of the security guards. That's all it took. When I asked for a copy of that footage so I could, you know, file a civil lawsuit, she said that it had already been deleted after one week. No accountability. In addition, she insisted that the incident could possibly occur at their hospital because, quote unquote, "Nothing like that has happened before." Despite the traumatic experience, she declined to waive my bill rather than offering an apology. She informed me that I would be paying the balance in full for the services rendered. Well, the level of professionalism, in other words, her resolution to my complaint of literal abuse was one, we didn't do anything wrong, and two, you better pay up. What happened to me 10 years ago was both disturbing and appalling. Mental health services should improve quality of life, not destroy it. I implore the city of Urbana to ensure that an incident like this can never happen again to anybody at any medical facility that serves Champaign-Urbana. Security guards and police officers are trusted authority figures in the community. They're expected to uphold the law equally and to serve the best interests of the public. They must be held accountable for gross negligence in the performance of their duties, particularly when such abusive power clearly serves to undermine the constitutional rights of citizens who are already socially disadvantaged in our community. This incident is a perfect example of mental health in America. It's no wonder that people with mental illness are so stigmatized and refuse to seek help. The system is effectively rigged to keep victims of psychiatric abuse like myself silent. Sometimes it really does feel like America's healthcare system is about profit over people. It's finally time for a change. We need to reform our healthcare system to protect the welfare of so many people like myself and others who suffer in silence. They all deserve a voice. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the council? This is public comment. All issues, yes.
Hi, my name is Stephen McGuire. I was informed that today the council would be voting on a resolution to make the meetings of the Alternative Police Response Task Force comply with Open Meetings Act requirements. It's my belief that this is a good idea. In general, I want to address, I believe Representative Quisenberry, I don't know if representative is the right title, had a legitimate concern in that members of the community might not feel comfortable giving feedback for fear of either police reprisal or reprisal of some criminal element. And so I think it's necessary that there be some kind of mechanism for anonymous feedback. At the same time, members of the Barry Dunn Task Force, city council members at large, and anyone who is an authority figure on this area should not have access to such. We definitely do need to do something to make sure that people in in positions of power, in psychiatric institutions are held to the highest standards because sadly, I have no doubt that they deleted the footage. As someone who has had to go to psych hospitals more than a few times, my sad conclusion is that the system is not designed to help and protect us. It's designed to help people go to sleep at night. And therefore, having some kind of now, this obviously wouldn't happen necessarily tonight, but some kind of regulation saying that security footage could not be deleted for a lengthy enough period of time, a month, two months or so, because the sad truth is because of the stigma on people living with mental health issues. If we come forward and say that we were the victims of some kind of abusive act, no one believes us. You're crazy. And sadly, this is why organizations like NAMI and many others are having such an uphill battle. Anyway, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak tonight? We'll move on to council input and communications. All right. Unfinished business, we have one item, which is Resolution Number 2024-09-063R. It's a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Lincoln Avenue, washer drive to Killarney Street, road diet demonstration. And Justin Swinford is here from Public Works and Public Works Director Tim Cullen as well, and they had information about in response to questions that were raised a couple of weeks ago. This item was carried over from the September thirtieth council meeting. Go ahead, Justin.
There we go. All right. Good evening. So I put together just a few slides here to go over the project in general and then be happy to answer any questions about the resolution that's in front of you all tonight. So the Lincoln Avenue washer drive to Killarney Street project has been in our capital improvement plan and is has money scheduled over the next several fiscal years. This is a project that was identified as an opportunity to make safety improvements along Lincoln Avenue. It's currently a four-lane section through the entire project area, which has generally been determined to be a less safe condition than some of the alternatives that are available to us now. So the city or we did through RPC apply for SS4A funding for the implementation, which would be more the overall project and more unsuccessful, but we were successful in getting a grant for this demonstration. And so that's what we're setting this state motor fuel tax money aside for through this So this is just this diagram shows a couple of the alternatives that we're looking at and then identifies the safety impact of the project. So on Lincoln Avenue through the the segments involved in the project area, we're seeing fourteen to sixteen thousand average daily travel. And there this is also, like I mentioned, four lanes, no bike lanes, some sidewalks through the through the project area, but certainly an opportunity to improve safety and, you know, use for all modes of traffic. And then as far as road diet guidelines go, FHWA, the threshold is less than twenty-five thousand ADT, and then IDOT's a little more restrictive and suggests less than twenty-thousand ADT. So we're well within the the range of vehicular traffic volume for a road diet, which is being suggested. And back to the, I guess, the beginning of the project, this is something that we've identified and would go through this design process. The demonstration portion of the project is it's an added step. It's it's really just like an enhanced form of community engagement to get people aware of what we're proposing. Do the demonstration to see what the impacts are on not just Lincoln Avenue, but the the transportation system around Lincoln Avenue as a whole. And then and then move forward with that for the the final implementation when it comes time to do the the larger construction project as we resurface or reconstruct part of Lincoln Avenue.
I was just going to throw one more thing in there is I think a lot of the feedback we were hearing was, you know, how is how are people going to react? Is congestion going to be an issue? You know, are there going to be access issues? And the the understanding where we're at right now with the the traffic that we see there is that that's not a major concern for us. We've been communicating with Hope Center up there on their food pantry. They've got some operational challenges. We're looking at some operational adjustments to that currently with them. And we're gonna inclusive of not just some of their operational things, but even potentially even some alternative sites that may work better for them. So very communicative with them. They're on board with us to try to figure that out. But even that is a snapshot in time. We see, you know, about an hour of traffic at around lunchtime, about an hour of traffic after five PM on Wednesdays that are impacted by this, but we're we're trying to work out some solutions with them to lessen that or even find an alternative site that could work for them.
Yeah, and as part of the the project, you know, we we already have some traffic counts through the project area. We'll be doing a lot of observation. The demonstration portion of the project offers us the opportunity to do even more observation of how or what impacts there are that we may not consider ahead of time. But in general, the the project would will follow the same design process as any other roadway improvement project. So right now, we're in Phase One Preliminary Engineering. That includes traffic studies, traffic modeling to, you know, to provide the, you know, the engineering design for that the roadway and and what the anticipated impacts are, and then also environmental clearances. And we're still working on the the timing of the the demonstration. We we know we want to do it while the U of I is in session so that we're capturing that traffic and also the pedestrian traffic that results from a lot of and the bus, those bus stops there on Lincoln Avenue and that bus traffic as well. And the we have to go through a federal level of environmental clearances so that that may push us to fall of 2025. But our current target is spring of 2025 for the demonstration. And then in 2026, we would move forward with the final design or what we call Phase Two Design. And our hope is that doing the demonstration and and then the reporting that's associated with it will put us in a good position if we want to apply for another SS4A grant for the implementation of the the project. And then dependent on funding, our current goal is to start construction in 2027.
James?
All right. Thank you for being here. I think the reason why we're here talking about this this meeting instead of passing it two meetings ago, at least two reasons that were on my mind was first, I think when John presented it originally, I was under the distinct impression that we were going to do it next fall because football traffic is very different from anything else that happens in this community. I know, I think there was mention that it would include graduation weekend, but that's that's not quite the same thing. I mean, if you look at what's going to happen this upcoming Saturday, there's going to be sixty-five thousand people at Memorial Stadium. And Lincoln Avenue has historically been an important entrance and exit from the community on football days. Yeah, I know we tell them to come in on University Avenue and we tell them to do other things, but it but it's still important. So the conversation two weeks ago was that it was going to be done, you know, this upcoming spring, and that was different from what I thought I had heard when I supported it to come to council at the committee, the meeting, committee of the whole. The the other thing was in the language, actually, Justin, from your message to us before that meeting was the way I read it, it it said, "We're going to do this test, but we're going to do this no matter what." That's how I read it. That's not how you wrote it. But that's that's how it came across, that that, you know, the test might change a little bit about the design, but we're moving ahead with this road diet. And I'm not completely comfortable saying that, that, you know, I think there are, if we're going to do the test, we need to learn from it. And one of the things it might tell us is what we had in mind is not going to work out in the big picture, and we might have to change significantly. So so that that and the shift from from fall next year to spring upcoming made me uncomfortable passing it. And of course, you guys were, I think, at some kind of conference or something, so we didn't didn't have you to ask the questions at that time, and that's why we pushed it off, at least a couple of the reasons why we pushed it off this week. Others may have had other other concerns, but those those are important to me, at least as far as going forward with this.
Sure. And just to address a couple of things there, I I don't think the intention is, you know, we're we're just going to plow ahead. I think the intention of that message is typically, we don't have funding to do this type of stuff. So we rely on traffic modeling and everything that we're already doing. And the traffic modeling and everything we've already done is telling us a three a three-lane road diet, which is what we would have pursued had the SS4A grant come through and we had implementation funds, we would have been pursuing that. Now, we would have done more rigorous design, more traffic analysis, things like that to see if there was going to be issues. But the 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 major pushes of this was safety, and the intention is anything we do here isn't to enhance safety, not to necessarily detriment the function or flow of traffic here. You know, I don't know that there's anything to restrict us from doing it in the fall instead of the spring at this point, timeline, obviously. So the intention would be is this is supposed to help inform another round of pursuing more funding to actually fund this type of project because locally, these type of projects don't get funded. They would push all of our five-year CIP. We wouldn't do any of it if we did one of these. Same deal we're dealing with Florida right now as well. So that would be the only thing is if we push it to the fall, which we might get pushed to anyways pending the federal environmental clearances, it may address that concern with the football traffic. Typically, what we're seeing with those type of things, you know, we're studying some of those peak flows, but ADT is a bigger driver of what the function of the road is. So there there's not something that would restrict us from pushing it to the fall, other than it just pushes everything else a little bit further out. And I do think this demonstration will be pivotal if we are successful in determining some things, you know, because a couple of the options that are out there, we can't do with a demonstration because there are physical infrastructure changes. But it may tell us we want to go, you know, on-street bike lanes versus off-street bike lanes or something like that, working with some of the bus traffic up there, looking at the impacts of Hope Center, you know, which is an isolated incident at the same time that we we're hoping to kind of have that resolved before we get anywhere anyways. But I do think we have to do more study. And I I think another thing that you didn't mention that I do think you guys asked about that was an exit strategy. So with pavement striping, the answer is when that goes down, it's going to be less than a week worth of work typically. So if there was something majorly wrong, it would take less than a week to undo it. It would be a pretty it's a pretty quick construction when you're talking about just grinding pavement markings off or laying pavement markings down. It's a moving operation. They'll be there for a couple of days typically. If something was really bad or or a miss, likely, we wouldn't be removing everything. We may be trying to isolate and address those one issues. But the intent is anything we do is actually going to enhance safety, not decrease it.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes.
Because the the exit strategy that I was interested in was less about how we undo it, but what would the criteria be that would lead us to undo it? You know, a certain number of accidents, certain kind of things that we see. The other thing that I wanted to ask, and you may have told me this, Tim, but this seems to be something that they're that they're about to do with Prospect in Champagne.
Yes.
They have a very similar plan to do that there.
Yep.
Are we benefiting from the research they've done on that particular road?
I'm not sure. I I've not been in direct coordination with them yet on that. I know that
I think they're ahead of us.
Yeah, that that one's, yeah, I think they're pushing towards implementation at this point, and that's a much higher volume road than what we even have at Lincoln. So we can certainly consult with them and see what the findings were of their studies. But, you know, it could be that they're within the same thresholds that we're dealing with that we've talked about there with the DOT and FHWA saying typically, when you're below these thresholds, you're not going to create new functional issues. So that could have been what has resulted there. You know, I view Prospect as much more congested just driving down it, but we can certainly consult with them.
Thank you.
Sharice?
Yes. Could you take the slides back a couple to the pictures? Yeah. And what I wanted to add, you know, especially because you're you're supposed to be doing the testing or or whatever during the spring, because there are a lot of students that and particularly that live in the apartment buildings off of Bradley and Lincoln. And so my question is, because the buses bring them in, where are the bus lanes? I understand you want to have bicycle lanes. Bicycle's fine. But what I don't want is for a student to be for their safety, there should be some pedestrian safety as well as that. With with the particular middle lane, I don't have a problem with that because I'm what I'm hoping is that you'll also add a left turn only light, especially at that particular intersection of Bradley and Lincoln, because that is a very dangerous intersection for pedestrians and drivers, is what my my observation. So and that will give you the opportunity to do that. But I am concerned, like, and you were talking about the distribution from the from the food the food bank there. And I know I've seen them lined up, you know, going into the the graveyard and everything else that actually try to keep from from stopping traffic. So my question is, I'd hate to I'd hate for them to have to relocate because apparently that is an area that is where they know where people know where to go. Let me put it that way. But I I there's a just a few concerns that I have in particularly with with that particular area of Bradley and Lincoln going further north even, going coming south. I believe there are already sidewalks on the east side of Lincoln. Are there sidewalks?
West, on the west side.
On the west, just on the west side? Okay, so you're going to add sidewalks to the east side where the residences are on Lincoln? That's my question between But I am concerned, like, and you were talking about the distribution from the, from the food, the food bank there. And I know I've seen them lined up, you know, going into the graveyard and everything else that actually try to keep from, from stopping traffic. So, my question is, I'd hate to, I'd hate for them to have to relocate because apparently that is an area that is where they know, where people know where to go.
Mm-hmm.
Let me put it that way. But I, I, there's a, just a few concerns that I have, in particularly with, with that particular area of Bradley and Lincoln going further north even, going, coming south. I believe there are already sidewalks on the east side of Lincoln. Are there sidewalks?
West, on the west side.
On the west, just on the west side? Okay, so you're going to add sidewalks to the east side where the residences are on Lincoln? That's my question. Between, can I think of this? I want to say Sunset, but I don't think that's the name of the street. That and Fairview. There, I know there are residences on Lincoln Avenue.
The, yeah, the house is along the east side of Lincoln Avenue. Yeah, so that's, yeah, part of the project would include, and that may be somewhat dependent on land acquisition, getting the, the right-of-way or the easement.
You have to get, you have to get permission from the owners to do that.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Or not just permission, but annex their property and so on and so forth like that?
Yeah, expand, expanding the right-of-way, which is something we've done for other projects, or getting a temporary or permanent easement to be able to construct that sidewalk outside of the roadway. It just depends on where those property lines are. But, yeah, we'll be, we'll be exploring the construction of sidewalks along both sides. And that, that goes along with, you know, improving the, the roadway for
Will the city also have to compensate people for that, that particular, those particular parts of, of land that they may have to take?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Just to touch on your, the pedestrians and the bus stuff, like, that was actually one of the driving forces of what is an issue up there right now is the bus drop-off, the way it's set up right now, is people are getting off on the east side
Right.
and then crossing the street with no protections. So, that, there are going to be intermediate thoughts about how we're getting pedestrians across Lincoln there because that is an issue. The road diet helps in a sense of it shrinks the area they have to cross. It gives us an opportunity to put a safety island in between, in that turn lane area too
Okay.
as well. So, those are going to be things that would, were certainly going to be incorporated in this, this concept demonstration of where those things fit with bus stops. We'll be in coordination with MTD on that stuff as well to see if there are better solutions there. You know, permanently, it could be, you know, even looking at operational changes for them that maybe enhance function, you know, as it is typically, I think, what, what is happening or what, you know, I've understood the observation to be is that people get off because the bus heads north, they get off on the east side and then cross, the bus then goes up, turns around and comes back.
Right.
And if they would hang out for a minute, you could avoid that crossing.
Yeah, they could get off on the west side.
Correct. So, we're, all of that is getting explored with this demonstration. The demonstration is, we're going to define that through further engineering to kind of define what the road diet's going to look like, where those things are going to be, where pedestrian crossings make sense and how we can build in protections for them in the demonstration as well.
Any other questions for the engineers? Chris and then Mary Alice.
Two quick questions. I think John said last time that this is one of the worst areas for accidents. Is there a measurement for that or?
Yeah, we, I mean, we get, there's access to crash data to look at those things. And one of the major issues is rear-end collisions, is my understanding. So, if you look at, if you go back a slide, Justin, you'll see, based on the crash data that we've analyzed over the past five years, it has a very high safety score because we have a lot of accidents in this area. That paired with, you know, probably some enhancement needs for vulnerable, vulnerable road users is kind of a driving factor in why the section score is so high.
Wait, so a, a high safety score means
Bad.
it needs safety attention?
That, that is a priority score for what projects we need to do.
Okay.
So, the higher points you get in the safety score there is actually not a good thing for us, but it tells us to focus our efforts there.
Okay, that, that's important to clarify.
Yes.
And it looks like if all the pennies came from Washington DC that we wanted, $6.5 million project?
That's our estimate currently.
And it would be bidded out to local contractors or?
It'd be open bid, yeah. We would, we would publicize it. Typically, if it's federally funded, I think that runs through the state bid process, actually. So, they would, we, we would coordinate with them and they would run it through the state bulletin.
Would there be some procurement requirements? And you know what I'm going back to again, minority and women and all that?
Depends on what the federal requirements are. Depending, you know, where the funding comes from sometimes dictates that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mary Alice.
So, my question actually was with the safety score. So, there's, there's really two things here that's going on, the impact on traffic and then the impact on safety. And of course, safety comes over traffic, right? Is the three-month time period enough time to evaluate whether or not that safety score will come down, meaning safe, it's more safe?
We hope to because we're going to be paying more attention to it. So, the difference with our safety score here, it's really driven just, just based off of accidents within a five-year time, time span, and some of those have varying causes and whatnot. I think the, the answer would be is we're, we're looking for things that create clear, isolated safety issues or function issues with this demonstration. Three months, I mean, it's going to be a snapshot in time, and that's the hard thing that we're all dealt with. You know, typically, we're not going to have $200,000 to test this out, to study it, but we can look into that. I mean, I think the, the nice thing with the study is that, you know, the actual, most of the money there is not actually towards the setting up and breaking down the demonstration, it's the analysis that's going to go in during that time. So, I think that budget is based off of a three-month timeframe currently.
Yeah, and, and I would also add that the road diet concept in general is something that is pretty well-proven in other, you know, other applications in other communities or even, you know, where we've done them in Urbana. And so, there's the statistic that's around a lot is a 19% reduction in all crash types when we, when you go from a four-lane section like that, or like what we have to, to what we're proposing with the two lanes and a shared left-turn lane. So, you know, our, this application specifically to Lincoln Avenue is, you know, something that we, it's nice we have the opportunity to study, but I think we have a high level of confidence that that improvement will result in the safety improvements for the corridor, which is, you know, again, if we, if we didn't get the demonstration grant funding, then we would still be pushing forward with this option. It's not to say that we would just go do it, you know, we, we'll do all the engineering, all the, the design and studies to, to support that. But it's, it's something that's generally been proven to be effective for safety.
So, along with what James said, I, I do think that doing it in fall is a good plan, not only because of the, the type of visitors that we have that come to our community, but it's also the beginning of the school year. And you've got new students up there trying to figure out how they're going to get from point A to point B. So, if you've got people who haven't kind of figured that out yet, certainly cause potential safety issues. So, I agree with James, I think it should be done in the fall.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Diane, I have a question.
Oh, I didn't know Grace was on. Go ahead, Grace.
Thank you. If you could just kind of clarify a little more to Sharice's questions about buses. I'm not seeing a bus turnoff in the diagram, and I think we had kind of mentioned that a couple of weeks ago. And I hear you saying that a lot will be still figured out in the study in collaboration with MTD. But I didn't know if you could just clarify on the specific plan, I guess, if there are bus turnouts as a plan or they would still be considered later?
Yeah, I think that, that's one of those hard ones. It's hard to demonstrate based on the cross-section because typically, if we're going to shrink the road, there's going to be new area for a bus turnout. We're not necessarily going to have that immediately with a pavement-only demonstration. So, we, we are going to have to figure that part out. It, it may be one of those things where we, you know, we, we have other instances where, you know, bus stops are essentially within a bike lane, things like that. For a demonstration, it's something, it's not perfect because we're not making infrastructure changes, but bus turnouts are, they're on the docket for consideration with the permanent improvements.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can we have a motion?
Okay, well, I would like to move for approval on this particular agenda. We're, we're voting on this now?
This is the action item for this.
Okay. Resolution number 2024-09-063R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Lincoln Avenue, watch the drive to Kilani Street, road diet demonstration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by James. Discussion. Mary Alice.
So, these resolutions always look a little bit different than the other resolutions that we have in our packet. I wanted to know, so it's not, we're not able to like add a whereas or therefore because it's a standard form that I dot uses. All right, so I wanted to know if you have a commitment to doing the actual item in fall rather than spring.
Yeah, we've got time. We'll talk with our designers a little bit more about that and certainly taking into consideration. And we'll drive towards that and we'll come back and let you know for whatever reason we're not going to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Thank you.
That completes our unfinished business. We do, do not have reports of standing committees. We'll move on to the Committee of the Whole, Councilmember Sharice Hersi.
From Committee of the Whole for approval, sorry, on the consent agenda, we have item A, ordinance number 2024-10-032, an ordinance approving a major variance farmhouse floor area at 809 West Pennsylvania Avenue, case number ZBA 2024 MAJ 01. And B, resolution number 02024-10-069R, a resolution approving a liquor license in the Class P package designation for Vishnayaya Urbana Inc., DBA, a Black Fox Convenience and Liquor, Liquor 602, North Cunningham Avenue, Urbana, Illinois. Do I have a second?
Your second.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
On the regular agenda, item two, we have
That motion passes.
Oh, sorry. On the regular agenda, we have resolution number 2024-08-058R, a resolution approving standardized employment agreement templates for city appointees. And item A, item B, resolution number, I'm sorry.
So, we'll need a second?
So, I need a second?
I'll second.
Sorry.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion.
I have a question, discussion.
Sure, go ahead, Grace.
Probably for Michelle. I think last time around, we had talked about, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at it right in front of me, the adding, just the word litigation matters as far as the transition of duties for reimbursement with such litigation matters. And I just didn't see that in this version.
That is correct in the version I just pulled off online. I apologize. We're trying to figure out what happened, but it looks like the draft we sent that we intended to be printed is not what's actually online. Additionally, I would say to older person, Wilken, that I promise I put chapter two in the indemnification sections of both drafts, and I apologize, I don't know why those aren't reflected in the drafts I found online.
The only thing, if, if I could just interject, I remember reading through in our, in our software and verifying that in fact, that particular change was there. So, I don't know what happened in terms of, that seems to be one week behind. So, I don't know if this needs to be put off until we can get the right, the, the material that I got through MUNICODE from HR had the changes that were requested. And so, I don't know why that didn't get advertised.
Yeah, I would like to have the full version publicly available, so I would be in support of deferring this in council or sending back to Committee of the Whole.
We can keep this, move this forward to the next council meeting? Comfortable doing that?
I would, as the second, be comfortable with that.
We moved it forward to this council meeting for, for approval, so.
It's an interrupting motion to defer it to a future action. So, we just need a motion to defer it to the next council meeting.
I understand that. Okay.
I'm willing to make that motion.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, James.
I, I move that we defer action on this item to the next meeting of the Urbana City Council.
There's a second.
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Present.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin? Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. So, that will move to the next meeting of the Urbana City Council.
Thank you, my apologies.
Next, we have resolution Fingers don't want to cooperate with me here. Resolution number 2024-10-070R, resolution adopting open, open meeting procedures for the Alternative Response Task Force.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by James. Discussion.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Oh, I'm sorry, Diane.
Go ahead, Grace.
I, I was wondering if there was any update from staff or executive on the binding nature of this, as we requested last week?
Are you talking about the resolution?
Yes.
The language is as stated there. And it reflects the changes that council had asked for last week. It also included language related to conducting the meetings that would be open to the public, meetings conducted in a manner consistent with the open meeting procedures of the Open Meetings Act, and they will be livestreamed and video recordings will be made available online. And we have conveyed this information to Barry Dunn along with the requested language changes for the contract and specific outline of Open Meetings Act procedures. Does that answer your question, Grace?
Not really, but I, that's, that's fine. I'll go out on a limb and leave it for now. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
The clerk please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Councilmember Hersi? We, we move on to reports of special committees. There are none, reports of officers. Carol?
I just wanted to give everybody an update on the U-Cycle, where we stand with U-Cycle. We have, we have two programs. There's the multi-family recycling and then there's the curbside recycling for single family. And what I'm about to say relates to the multi-family. We have issued a notice of termination to the, is that the right phrase? No, it's termination, to the existing vendor and the new vendor began today. The staff in Public Works had anticipated that we would have on The staff in Public Works had anticipated that we would have ongoing problems with the existing vendor. And so they issued the RFP competing the contract early. The regular expiration of the contracts for both curbside and multifamily will be in March. But in anticipation of having, having to make kind of a midterm switch, they got proposals and had people, they had the amount of turnaround time someone would need for short notice. So we've been able to fairly seamlessly transition from the existing contractor for multifamily only. They will continue with curbside.
Questions for Carol, Chris? Oh, lots of questions.
Thanks, Carol. Any price differential?
There is, there is some price difference with multifamily. It's, I would say relatively modest. I can't, I can't give you the numbers right now. But in anticipation of a discussion item that we'll have next week, we, because we did get the bids for both programs, there is a huge increase. If we maintain the level of service that we have for curbside, that we will anticipate come spring. And that's something that Tim Cowan and his staff want to talk to the council about. Whether we maintain the level of service and absorb a 400% increase or that we adjust the level of service and soften that blow. But any way, any way you approach it, we will see significant increases in curbside recycling fees.
Mary Alice and then Sharice.
So I am assuming that none of the days have changed with the new vendor?
That's correct.
Okay. And who is the new hauling company?
I believe they're called Midwest Fiber.
Okay. And so it was ABC?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And again, this is multifamily only.
So Midwest Fiber will be doing curbside as well or we're going to have a different vendor for curbside?
The, there's been no, to my knowledge, and Tim could answer this next week, whether there's been a decision made about who the vendor will be come March for curbside. But mid, right now Midwest Fiber is only collecting the multifamily recycling. ABC will continue with the curbside program.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to understand. So ABC will continue with the curbside until March?
Yes, and I don't, again, I don't know who will be awarded the bid. I don't know if that decision has been made yet. Tim can answer that next week because he will be here to talk about this topic specifically.
Okay. I just wanted to know that, that there's going to be some, still some kind of continuity in pickup and service and stuff right now.
Our staff is very sensitive to this. First of all, we're very committed to recycling. But when you have an interruption, particularly with multifamily, it starts to, it starts to pile up really quickly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Grace, did you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Just a quick note, the special census, of course, is underway in Urbana. And they have switched to field representatives going door to door, contacting households which didn't respond to the census online. And that started, I believe, today. And it's been new for the next several weeks. So, so people are encouraged, if someone comes to your door, ask for ID, check to make sure they are a census representative and participate in the census. If you're not home, we're told they will eventually leave a card and there will be a phone number on there that people can call and do it online. But they really prefer to see as many people when they come to your door. So they will be carrying identification and they will have IDs and they will have branded equipment. So it should be very easy to identify the census workers. The reports of officers, I don't believe so. All right, there's nothing under new business. We have one discussion item, and I think that's what most of the people in the audience are here for. And it's the ARPA reallocation update. Will Colchis, we'll start it off.
Thank you. I will be very brief and just kick off the discussion with a few slides. So this is just a real quick summary of the eight different funding goals from our concept plan that we did a couple of years ago, as well as the number of projects and some of the metrics that you saw from last week's presentation. This is a list of the first round and the second round and third round review. And I have this in spreadsheet if you want to look at it in more detail as we go through our discussion. But this kind of shows in Excel format, a real brief summary of the process that we did to get to the projects that we have. So with that in mind, I just have a, oh yeah, and a couple of deadlines. We have to obligate all funds by the end of this calendar year. And then all funds have to be spent by the end of 2026. So with that in mind, I just have a couple of discussion prompts just to get the conversation going. You know, I'll read through them real quick and then after that, we'll just have a discussion. So is there a particular concept plan funding priority that council wants to focus on? Are there project successes that we would like to see continued or expanded? Have, from our initial review process, have any preferences or understandings of projects changed? And how can we most effectively allocate and spend the $305,000 and change? So with that, I'll leave it up to you.
And I would add the key here is the allocation piece, which has to be done by December of this year. The money can be spent through December 2026, but we have to have it reallocated by the end of the year. Mary Alice?
Can you define what you mean by reallocated?
So $105,477 is an initial allocation. $200,000 is a reallocation because we allocated it to a project that did not proceed. So it kind of goes back into that fund. So it's just, it's an allocation that we have to make. One project failed, so we have to find a new project to give that money to.
No, and I understand that. I guess what I'm trying to say, you said the deadline to allocate it was the end of this year, right? So that means we have to identify a program, but they don't have to spend it.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
I believe you need a signed agreement, correct?
I think that would be the safest to comply with Treasury's guidelines, yes.
James?
Yeah, one, one question before we dive into this. One of the things I did to prepare for this meeting was to look at the percentage of allocation in existing projects. And I noted that a handful of the projects are like under 25% of spending. And so my question is, do we have any concerns that existing projects that we've allocated to are not going to be able to spend the money that was allocated to them? I'll call one out that I'm sure the answer is they will spend the money. But for example, the Housing Authority for Steer Place Renovation is listed as currently having nothing spent. Right? Out of, out of $500,000. But I understand that project is starting to get underway. And so I imagine that money's going to get spent fairly quickly. But some of these others are at like, like the Stiefel or the loan program. It's only listing like one, one and a half percent of the money has been spent. So I, and they, we, we gave a pretty large pool for loans to come out of that. How are they in the next two years going to spend $250,000 towards supporting those loans? Which would have to be several million dollars worth of loans.
There's a very short answer to that one and there's a long answer, which is probably 25 projects long. I think the short answer is at this time, working with the RPC, we don't have any immediate concerns. I think during JD's presentation last week, you could see that the percentage of spending as, as percentage of what was expected to date. And some projects are a little bit behind schedule, but for the most part, most projects are, you know, on schedule or close to it. The one you referenced is a little bit slower. And the way we have our contract process with them is every time applicants are required to spend their money in the quarter that they say they will, if they fall far enough behind, then we force them to come back to have a contract amendment to start having discussions. So we've been into some discussions with that particular project. And just in the last quarter, they've, you know, been loaning some more funds and they have a new strategy. So I think we don't have any immediate concern, especially because that was a four-year project. So they're a little bit behind. You know, some projects are already done, some projects, you're very, very close. Some of the projects have more programmatic expenses. There is some risk that, you know, they might not spend all that money. But as of today, there's not an immediate concern about projects not being able to spend all the funds.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, Chris, go ahead.
So Will, when the buzzer sounds 12:31:26, whatever's not spent is lost, right? Goes back to the federal government, I assume?
Yeah, so we're going to do what we can to avoid that. And part of the way we've done that is with the quarterly schedule. So when we get to second quarter, third quarter, 2026, we wouldn't have, we essentially wouldn't be giving anybody any leeway if they couldn't spend those funds by the end of the year. And JD can tell you the more sophisticated technical answer. But after 2024, if a project fails, if there is an already obligated project that is similar scope, you can move those project expenses funds. So if project number one was supposed to spend $100,000 and they only spent $90,000. And project two, you know, you might be able to move that money around from an ARPA standpoint. There are rules and, you know, I can't give you the technical definition that our, the Treasury guidance has. But if a project fails and, you know, depending, if the scope of an existing project doesn't change, we can manage that a little bit so that we don't have to give any money back, so.
That stuff you do unitarially or do we have to vote on that, those kind of maneuvers?
Those would, I haven't thought that far ahead, but I think that would be a contract amendment at that point. So depending on what that was and the scope of that, I think, you know, the contracts have some flexibility. So, you know, if it was $5, I don't think that would, but obviously a larger amount I think would. But I don't have the exact answer to that.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
All right, I'm just trying to clearly understand what you're talking about. So let's say there is four programs that work to, for food insecurity. And one program fails, does that mean for the three programs that are remaining, if they are, they need it to increase capacity or their ability to deliver food, you can move that, whatever that project that failed into that? Because it's the same kind of service? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know if it has to be that granularly specific. We have 24 projects. I think my understanding of the guidance is, you know, if one project could fail, any of those other 24 projects that they still had are but eligible expenses. And the scope of the project was essentially the same, which, you know, since we only funded most projects a fraction of their total project cost, we should be able to have that money count to a different project. But I don't know if it has to be as specific as each funding goal, as for example.
Okay, so it's just any of the projects that we funded?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other logistical questions for Will before we move on to the others? Grace, did you have any technical or logistical questions?
Are we doing discussion next, you mean?
We're getting there.
Okay, I'll wait for the discussion.
Okay. All right, I guess we're ready to move on to what are your thoughts on how you'd like to approach this? James?
So I can, I can tell you how I've been thinking about this. And this is one of the reasons why I wanted to look at the percentage of what was spent. Because one of the things that I want to make sure that happens is if we reallocate money to one of these existing projects and they're, it doesn't sound like we have any of these, but if they were struggling to spend the money that we already allocated them, that wouldn't make, that wouldn't make much sense. I am tending to look at projects that were underfunded, were somewhat modest in nature and have been successful, maybe even up to 100% of what we originally gave them. And I'd been thinking that with, I didn't know it was 305,000, but I was thinking 200,000. But with 305,000, I was, I was expecting that we might be able to extend a number of these, particularly the ones that have been successful and have spent the money and can demonstrate what that money did, that those would be the things that would be higher on my priority list. Plus, I'm going to say, one of the things that we didn't fund fully that I think is really important from an environmental standpoint for this community is the project to establish a hazardous waste permanent facility in this community. So I would, I would look on that one as, as something that should, should have some attention specifically. But otherwise, I didn't, I didn't have anything other than this kind of measure of were they successful spending money so far? Can they show what they did with that money? Were they underfunded to begin with? Those were the things that were going in, in my head.
Just to clarify for folks, if you didn't have the chart in front of you, by percent, by underfunded, it would be, you're referring to the very last column, the percent of the project asked funded. Okay. Jay?
Can you clarify, does it have to be related to the programs that are already listed that we funded? Or are there broader options? I ask that just because I, I think for me, when we're thinking about criteria, I want to think about, for lack of a better way of putting it, shovel-ready projects, right? This is a quick turnaround time for allocating the funds. Granted, there's more time. But I think it would be helpful to know how restricted we are in case there are things either with the city or the township that we could say, you know, we're just going to allocate these funds for this purpose because we're able to do a quick turnaround time to identify and allocate those funds.
There's not an, at this point, not an ARPA requirement that $305,000 be one of the previous projects awarded funds to.
Any other thoughts? Jay?
Thanks.
Go ahead, Grace.
I think I feel somewhat similarly. I think the important thing is that we need to get this money where it's needed in the community as quickly as possible. And that seems like there's no time for a whole new application process at this point. So it seems that, to me, that the options are, as I think we're getting to, either look for internal kinds of avenues, in a sense, like rental assistance with the township, for example, something that we know is kind of a, a need always. Or look at some of the selected ARPA projects. And I think if we go that route, I would like some info, yeah, I appreciate the table, I think for us to consider, on what projects weren't fully funded and could they still use that money and still complete their full scope of their project? And I'd also be curious if RPC had any recommendations based on their experience working with any of these groups on capacity or the organization's input.
Mary Alice?
I like the thought process that James provided. I think as we, as we look at this, Will, you've put together a really nice spreadsheet. So thank you very much for all of this information. But I'd like to ask you to add two columns for me. So if you could add in the percentage spent already. And this actually wouldn't be a column, but I think it would be helpful to know out of these 24 projects, which ones are actual building, construction type things? Because then, you know, for example, the Health and Wellness Center, once it's built, they already have all their money. But if Steer Place is waiting for some final bids, once they get that, then all that money will be spent, right? So I think that will help us look at this, look at this with a, with a finer grain and hopefully with the same understanding of where all these projects stand. I agree with- I agree with Jaya, I think we're going to have to do something that is shovel-ready, for lack of a better word. And I'm not trying to push the timeline here, but is it possible to allocate the amount to the city and fold it into our social services grant in the spring?
Yeah, we're on the same timeline now.
Not necessarily.
You would have to meet Treasury's obligation standards, so there's potentially a creative way, I don't, I don't know exactly how to tie that, you know, a nebulous social service program, I'd have to check with RPC. If we don't have all those projects already selected, I don't know if that would meet the definition or not, I think, but I can check with RPC how that would work.
James?
So two things. One, one thing I want to mention in the report that we got last week, I know Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, one of the things we funded them for was repairing or enhancing the sprinkler system in that facility, and I didn't see that that was one of the things that had been accomplished yet, and they haven't, like, spent all the money. That's the kind of thing that we wanted to make sure, it felt like we wanted to make sure it got done because it was brick and mortar and it was public safety and it was a education program for our youth in the community. Is that, did they not get that done because that, they put that off to later, or did they not get that done because the cost became more than what we could fund? There may be some things here that we don't know, and I think that's why that question about, you know, what the RPC might know about each of these organizations that they're working with, that, where that recommendation that Grace suggested might, might come in very handy. I, I do, I'm interested in that question about rolling this into our social service grant in the spring. At that point, are we still under any obligation to tie this to the concept that ARPA was driving towards, right? Recovery and response specifically associated with the pandemic? And if we don't, if we don't have any restrictions like that, then I'd say, I'd say it'd be fair game.
Yeah, again, I'll have to double-check. I think, I know Carol's heard me say this, but all money is fungible, so if, you know, you spend this money somewhere for something that we already intended to spend that money on, that would free up money for something else, but this money has to, however we obligate it, or however you obligate it, has to meet ARPA criteria. So what that money frees up, depending on where it comes from, but this specific money does have to satisfy all ARPA requirements, if that makes sense.
Jaya?
Thanks. So how does that work with, with issues around supplanting? As if we're saying it could free up money, couldn't that cause an issue with supplanting?
I, I have to ask JD and RPC, yeah, that's not, there is a concern there. I think ARPA, my understanding of it has generally been pretty flexible, you know, you can't double-count, but if we decide to use this ARPA funds instead of other funds, I don't know if that would, I don't think that would count as supplanting, but I can get a formal answer for you.
Go ahead.
So one thing to piggyback off of that of, related to Mary Alice's idea of if supplanting is not an issue, but we can't just kind of say, oh, we're going to push it to support the social service funding for next fiscal year, whether there'd be an opportunity to replace some of what we've already allocated for this fiscal year, could be another way of essentially doing the same thing. But I think we definitely need an answer to that question about supplanting before going down that road. So I think figuring out if there's a way to, to make it go towards the social services grants, the youth services grants, I think could be a good, good way to kind of think about having a little bit more time and ability to be thoughtful about how we're allocating those funds. I'm just going to say again, I do have a conflict of interest as an agency that receives one of those grants, but I think that it is a worthwhile piece to explore. Aside from that, I was just going to reiterate that I think looking at maybe if there are, you know, township or city projects that we could quickly act on would be other pieces I think that would be really looking, worth looking at. I know even just in terms of, you know, all the construction projects that we can never get to, I know it's not going to, not going to fill a huge hole in that, but I think that there probably are a lot of projects, whether it's tenant-based rental assistance or some piece of a construction project that you could easily tie to decrease revenue because of the pandemic to, to keep with the ARPA guidelines.
Shandra?
The project with the Urbana Roof Repair and Replacement Program, something like, something like that to, to give the money to, how many applications or how many, you know, people have applied to that that maybe the funding isn't there for?
Do you mean how many people are ineligible for that program?
Yeah, so I know it's mostly geared towards seniors, right? The Roof Repair Program? Or was this more open to anyone?
I don't know the specifics off the top of my head where, I don't want, I don't want to say the wrong thing.
Yeah, I, I think I recall Braden said it was geared towards seniors. Could adding more money to that possibly open it up to more homeowners who need help with roof repair?
I can ask Braden.
James?
Yeah, one thing I want to mention, there's two things, but one thing I want to mention is the, the really nice thing about Mary Alice's idea and Jaya's support of that is if that can be done, then we do have a methodology that we could utilize if other money becomes released as time goes forward, and then we don't have to think about this every time, you know, something falls off the list. I will point out that both the City Urbana Roof Repair and Replacement Program and the Sewer, Sanitary Sewer Lateral Lining Program, the Roof Replacement Program's only spent 20% of the money so far, and the lateral sewer program, only 16, almost 17%. So those are the ones that I looked at and I said, particularly the sewer one, are we going to be able to do everything we need to do with this money in the time that we have left? I know we have roughly 65% of the properties in that area onboard with the project, but there's another 35% that we don't have onboard.
Sharice?
I can kind of speak to that, James. The, the issue regarding the, the lateral sewer lines is that it has to be done in phases. So part of the phase, the first phase is the tele, the televising of the lines, and the issues regarding that is like some, some of the lines that they actually televised, we, of course, they have to download it and then they have to, they're sharing the information also with the homeowner. But some of those lines that were televised were so bad, so bad that they had to be replaced and repaired. So that's probably one of the things too that has slowed down that particular process. The other thing is of, of course, getting, going through all that information and discussing, and sending that information to the homeowners, after which, if they decide, if, if it is found, because everything is done in a phase, if it is found that there needs to be replacement or repair, then they have, we have to get another release form for people to sign for, for the, the people to come on their property and do that. And then we have to have another release form for people to align their sewer lines if that's what they want. So it's, that's been done in phases. So as far as I know, all the, all of the sewer lines have been televised, all the, for the people that have, that signed up and gave their permission for that to happen. So the next thing to happen is the review of those, of those televised lines and information passed on to, to the owners and repair, replace of the line if need be. And then after that, there's a lining. So that's, that's why it's moved in that direction, that's why there's so little movement, just to let you know.
Things take time. Chris?
Will, is it possible that we could go back into the list of, the big list of 40 and fund a project that didn't get any money last time?
The, the funding is at council's discretion, and that's, I did put that one discussion prompt of, you know, whether or not the preferences from the initial review have changed. Generally speaking, the projects that weren't funded were either through a lack of score or a lack of consensus on council, so council can fund any of these projects, but that was the kind of the history last time go around.
To summarize what we've heard so far, the, probably the biggest question is, can this money be moved forward into our social service grant funding process? That would give people time to apply and time to consider the applications, and that's a question that we'll find out by consulting with RPC. There was also requests to have the percent of money, the allocations that have been spent on the current projects, so add a column, and then indicate which of these are infrastructure projects versus programmatic projects. And then the other concern was, well, that's related to the, moving it forward into social service funding. Any other, I guess, policy questions at this point? There's a question? No?
No.
Okay, well, we have some homework to do. Stay tuned. Okay, we'll move on to an appointment, and this is to the Human Relations Commission for Charles Davidson, for a term ending June 30th, 2027. The council's asked to approve the appointment of Charles Davidson. He's been a resident of Urbana for over 20 years, currently is the community navigator with First Steps Community House through First Followers. Davidson is a mentor, advisor, events coordinator, and trainer for the Reentry House staff with First Followers, which is a nonprofit organization in Champaign County with the mission of providing support, guidance, and hope to formerly incarcerated people and their loved ones. In his application, he wrote, quote, "I would like to be able to help with the problems in our communities. I'm used to working on projects with others. I currently work with people who come out of the Department of Corrections and work on getting them back on their path to being part of our community." So I would entertain a motion for the appointment of Charles Davidson to the Human Relations Commission.
I move to approve Charles Davidson as a member to the Human Relations Commission.
I'll second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Chris. Any discussion?
Diane, I do.
Grace?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you, Charles, for your service and the support to your commission, and congratulations, and wish you the best in the commission. And also, please feel free to stay in touch and let us know of any connections with the commission and council, especially since you're, you're so often watching. So thank you, and please feel free to reach out with any connections there.
Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 That motion passes. Congratulations and thank you. Last item on the agenda, we'll ask for a motion to go into closed session per ILCS 120/2C11 to discuss pending litigation. So moved. Second. All those, will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes, and just-
Can we clarify that there's no business after this?
I was about to say that. Just so the public knows, we will come out of closed session and adjourn the meeting, so no business after this. Thank you.
Yeah, I got two, three calls.
Could I have a motion to go back into open session?
So moved.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi? Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin? Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. This meeting is adjourned.